All this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Here.
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 Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Stan?
Here.
Preston.
All right, with that, we don't have any agenda changes or deletions that I'm aware of. So with that, we'll start with our first speaker, Mary Jo Lemansky. How are you? Come on up.
First. Last week, I believe it was last Monday, I talked to, I think, most people were here, maybe Scott, you were not in.
Yeah, I was overseas.
Okay. We talked about a sculpture that we are proposing to have placed somewhere in the city of Douglas. This is a sculpture, the name of the sculpture is called Whispers. It is being donated by Amazwi Art Gallery. And I brought a photo today so that you could get a better idea of what the piece is. And I also brought an actual piece that you could also look at just to see the way that it's been sculpted and all.
You said the city of Douglas, did you mean?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I knew what you meant.
Get my cities mixed up. I'm doing three sculptures in Fenville, Douglas, and Sagatuck. So knowing that this is Sagatuck, I apologize. So anyway, the sculpture is something that people looked at. It's from Zimbabwe. And I'm sure most of you are thinking, why do we need African art in Sagatuck? Why in Sagatuck? And my answer to that is why not? I think it's really important, right now, we do not have a diverse collection in the artwork that's being shown. The only, we have no, well, the only artist of color is in this SCA collection, and it's a Jason Quigno small sculpture. So I, I think if we're looking towards going into more of a diverse community, that we certainly need to bring in some art from artists of color, which is a good start for that. And certainly people and visitors that come here, if they were to see something that, that really resonated from them that was not created by somebody that is not of color, I think that that, to them, would speak really strongly about Sagatuck's commitment to trying to bring in some minority presence in that. The other thing I think that's really important is hopefully that they will, there will be some type of attention from the African-American community. I did a lot of research on Africa. I worked at the Kalamazoo Institute of Arts for several years, and we did a program on African art. And most of the people that, that went out and presented these programs were African-American. And we had a professor from U of M come in, and he had identified all the facial features of all the docents that were there, and he said, oh, I can guarantee you, you're from this area, you're from that area. And they were thrilled because as most of the African-Americans, they lost their heritage. They have no idea where they're from. So we're hoping that through the, the presence of a sculpture from Africa, that there will be an awareness and a sense of pride for anybody that comes that's African-American to recognize that there is a connection to a continent that is, is far more vast than we can even possibly even conceive of. And at the same point, you know, most of the time what you hear from Africa is starvation and wars and all the genocide and all. But the continent together, all together, really speaks of a lot of really strong human values. And one of the values is motherhood. That is one of the most important parts of most African families and certainly most African cultures. So the sculpture we have right now, which is Whispers, it's, it's created by an artist who has recently passed, well, 2004, Lambnek Banjais. And he is portraying the, the kind of the, the formation of the sculpture really has to do with the mother and the child. And it's called Whispers, and the reason being that many times what you whisper to somebody is something you want them to listen really closely to. So it's, it's a quiet sculpture. It's not one that, it's not like the Romero Brito that's over there, this bright and... So you're gonna have to stop, meditate, and contemplate it somewhat. The really nice part about this is that the actual sculpture is the shape of the continent of Africa. So when you get away from it, you can see that continent shape, but when you get close, you're really looking at that as somebody is whispering along the way. The one thing I wanted to kind of point out is there's a lot of opposites in what they consider, a lot of African cultures consider as beautiful and valuable compared to us. For example, heavy women are considered beautiful. And the reason is because that would show their, their wealth, that will also show that they, they've got lots of milk to nurture these babies, they've had lots of babies. So when you look at a thin African woman, they don't consider them as someone that has lived this bountiful life. So that's a real opposite for us. A friend of mine who is African-American went over, and she's very thin and did not have large breasts. And she was in, taking a shower with a bunch of women, and they said, you have pointy titties. And they said, well, what's wrong with that? She said, well, you've never had children. And if you have children, that is a sign of beauty. So anyway, that, those are some of the things that we as, you know, where we live in the United States now, we don't even conceive of that. Not that this sculpture has any of that, which is a good thing. But it, it does tell you that we do value some of the same things, but they do in a very different way. They say mothers are revered as creators, providers, cradle walkers, nurtures, and goddesses. They inspire awe because they're known to wedge huge powers in their children's lives. So we, Wally and I and Mike selected this sculpture for a couple reasons. We think it is about family. We think it's about children. We walked around to the other parks, city parks, and we chose Cook Park because we felt that, I was there just staking out where the sculpture would go, and there were families all over there running around and, you know, doing stuff. And I thought this would be a beautiful place for this sculpture because it does speak to families, and it is a place where people, especially families, gather. The other thing that we thought about was Cognlin Park, but we weren't sure where the location would be there. It seems like that's a lot of green space, and to put it there might be a little bit more awkward. So that's, those are the places we considered. The Rose Garden, Wicks Park, we thought about. Little bit too inviting it to people to climb on it. And we're gonna be very careful in the structure of the pedestal, that it would not be suitable for climbing, that, that, you know, the sculpture would be there to look at and appreciate. The pedestal, oh, here's the site. It's between the two trees. There's four trees there, and that's the, the large willow tree over on the side. The site is between the two trees, closer to the, the dock and the boats over there. We're looking at a base that would be about 48 inches by 48 inches. There's the stakes right there. And you'll see where it goes in proximity to the other places that are there. We have, the sculpture itself is 40 inches high by 32 inches wide by 18 inches in depth. So we were putting in a pedestal that would be 38 inches high by 38 inches wide by 38 in depth. So it's, it's going to contain that sculpture. It's not gonna be wobbly. And why I said Douglas is the guy that I'm working with, we're dedicating a sculpture next Thursday in Douglas. He is a stone sculptor, and he said he would be happy to oversee the weight of the base to make sure that that piece is going to stay, and he said he'd be willing to install it. He has a glue that he said is harder than the granite itself, and he would drill the holes. And he said he, he would be, I would feel very comfortable with him installing if it comes to that. I have been consulting several people about the base. We've got certainly quite a few names. Scott here gave me a name, so we haven't, we're really being, gonna be very careful about how that is built and how, how the safety's going to go. And then this piece that's over here, it is also a mother and child. If you get a chance, if you walk around the back of it, you can see the back of the stone is uncarved. And that's what the Whispers is as well. And that's, that's the beauty of why they do that. Somebody might say, oh, why is the back not carved? It's the idea that this, this stone created this, this piece, and it spoke to them. So the back of it is part of the transition of it coming into the piece itself. And you can see in that same piece, almost a gesture that's in Whispers, the mother kind of leaning over the child. So that's, that's it. I think there might be another couple pictures of the photographs of that area at all, or not?
She showed them already, yeah.
Oh, did you? Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah. Counsel questions. Can you really quick remind me, so in Douglas, what would, and in Fenville, what are?
Douglas is having a large sculpture in store next week. It's called The Seven Grandfathers. It's a column piece that is created by Jason Quigno, who's an Anishinaabe artist. And each of the seven grandfathers are teachings from the Anishinaabe tribe. So they have faith, hope, honesty. So it's, it's really a celebration again of ancestors. And in Fenville, there's a piece that's being built right now by an artist named Hector Vega. And he is creating a piece that's called Reaching for the Stars. There is a migrant worker on the bottom of the sculpture, holding up, and he's got all the fruit and vegetables that have grown in the area, and on the top, there's a child reaching for a star. So his, his, excuse me, his thought is that he has sacrificed his life, not only to pick food to feed everyone else, but also to feed his family and to make sure that his child is able to move farther than he is. So they're really three powerful sculptures, and, and our hope is that we can use these as educational opportunities. You know, I know there's a lot of sculpture here, and I think people walk by and look at it and say, isn't that nice? But this, we're hoping that these three sculptures will be opportunities where we could do workshops and bring in different things to kind of engage people in the sculpture itself.
Good.
Any other questions?
Counsel, counsel questions. No, sir. Counsel questions.
Hi, Mary Jo, welcome. Thank you very much. It's an awesome piece. Look forward to having it in the city. Question more for the city management. The location that's been selected, has it been decided on, or is that being proposed? Where are we in terms of, this is the first pitch I think I've seen of a location.
Yeah, this is just a proposal. We have not decided anything.
Okay.
We would like it to be there, but it's a proposal. Any other questions?
Mary Jo, thank you. What is your timeframe?
There really isn't a timeframe. We, we are going to be installing the Douglas sculpture on Thursday. The Fenville piece will probably go up sometime in August. So it would be nice to keep the, kind of the, the sequence going. So I would like to see it, you know, September, October, if, if that, if possible, just to keep, keep them as a group and, and really kind of have this, this initiative, be more cohesive, or be cohesive. Yes.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and it's a, it's a beautiful piece, and I'm in favor of more public art, so this is great. I, I think I do look forward to a, maybe a deeper dive with the rest of council on location. Given, given the size, the reflective and quiet nature of the piece, I think I'd like to have a little bit of a more robust conversation around location for it.
That'd be great. And if you all have a better or a different idea, we are not married to the spot. So we just, this was our first stab at it, but knowing that you would probably better understand where this piece would go, we're more than happy to, to consider any other places.
Appreciate that. Thanks. And the other piece, we probably would like to involve our public work superintendent as well for his guidance. So thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Very good.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, second up, we have the C2AE engineers with the Blue Star Trail update.
Yeah, we got Mr. Rusty Owens with us today.
Rusty.
Yep.
All right.
Good afternoon, Rusty Owens with C2AE stationed out of Lansing. I am transitioning to the new, to be the new C2AE lead with the retirement of Larry Fox, although Larry will continue to be involved. He's promised me that. So a lot of history there. So first off, I passed out some stapled information there, which is actually, and I should say, MDOT's ready to make a, a funding commitment for the project, but they did come back in their review and they had six questions. That's what's in front of you right now. The black text is their question. The red is our draft response to that. And I don't know how, I mean, I can go through each one of those and just kind of give you a highlight of where we are. The first bullet point states that Shippo archaeologists recommend, if possible, the trail be moved to the other side west, which the township approved. And if you look at the graphic on the very last page, you'll see, I think it's blue. It's red. The red is the realigned trail, which is on the west side of 66th Street. And we're, we believe that's going to eliminate obviously any concerns. It's pretty much disturbed. There's fiber optics that have been put in there and, and some railroad, so I don't believe that's gonna be an issue. The city is willing to hire a qualified archaeologist, which I just received, their parenthetic ballpark estimate for doing both the cultural and the archaeology, archaeological survey for the project in, in association with MDOT's request. We'll be passing that along here, I would think, shortly to the group. Basically, the cost was $6,500, and there'll be a little bit more. We're assuming they're gonna want us to stake the alignment, things like that, so there'll be a little bit on top of that, but not much. Should be under $10,000 total. Any questions on, on that aspect? Okay, the second bullet point, the third bullet point, excuse me. The design needs to be, the project needs to be designed in accordance with current ASHTO and MDOT design standards. We've reviewed, as it states there, the previous bridge plans to see where the portion of the project would be. We believe the cross slopes and all, and longitudinal slopes are all compliant and demonstrates, as demonstrated in the January response, and really don't think that there's gonna be any issues with, with that item. Estimate should be updated to include some bridge deck modifications. We feel that there is some minor areas of the deck that need some minimal repair, and we will review that and coordinate as necessary any cost increases there. That also included the bridge railings, which I know is, is an issue of concern here. It's an issue that we're concerned with. It is typically a blanket requirement from MDOT. You know, they may not even look at the plan and say, hey, you gotta have a 42-inch rail height. But, you know, it's subjective. We do not think the, feel the users are gonna be in parenthetic close proximity. There is eight foot from the bridge railing on the west side. And the other thing is, they did not cite a, a specific design standard. So we've requested and kind of pushing back on, hey, you know, what standard do you want this designed to? So that's kind of an open-ended issue. It is a concern. It's not, you know, a showstopper, but we're gonna have to have another discussion with, with MDOT. And I might preface again that we have talked with Julie from MDOT, the grant coordinator, previous to preparing this response, so she was all on board. So we'll see where that goes. Next bullet point strongly suggests hiring a cultural resource consultant. I already mentioned, we've done that. The neon sign, we believe, you know, was, it was installed in 2000, so really it doesn't qualify. We will look at that and make a comment in the archaeological report, but I do not believe that anything, you know, again, that's not a showstopper or anything we're gonna have to, to move or relocate. Trail will have an impact on the cemetery because it will be adding a trail where there is not one currently. Stated previously, we're gonna construct the trail on the west side of 66th Street, so thereby should eliminate active concerns regarding that, you know, that area, as I mentioned, is disturbed or has been disturbed. So we're thinking that, you know, it may be best for Cardinal, who is the archaeological and cultural subconsultant, to coordinate typically directly with MDOT on this when we get going. I should mention that once the archaeological and cultural report is done, Shippo usually takes three to four weeks to review and comment on it. So from a scheduling standpoint, we'll have to build that in as well. The next item is, MDOT was suggesting we move the project to 2025. We're, we're saying let's keep it at 2024. If there's any outstanding or, or critical issues, then we can talk about that later down the road instead of giving up that year. I think that's basically a quick, quick overview. Certainly, you can read through anything of specifics in there that I might have missed, but I think that's the overview, so.
All right. So you, you said when you started that MDOT is ready to come forward with a funding commitment. So this is a pretty much of a typical process that happens with grants?
Yeah, yeah. Again, we went through review, you know, back in January. They've come back and looked at it again, and, you know, different items to, to review. So I think we get past this and we should be on the road again, so.
Great. Very good. So Holly, do you have anything you wanna?
No, I just want to thank you for coming in today. And I would just repeat what you said and what Rusty said. This is actually, I've worked with Ryan and Daniel DeFranco pretty closely on this because they, and C2AE, because they have all been through this process, and many of us have not.
Yeah.
So when, when we initially received this, it was sort of surprising, but I guess this is sort of part of the normal back and forth.
Yeah.
And I would say that MDOT money is also FHA money. It's federal money. And so there is some back and forth between the state. We've been working very closely with the state. There's been a lot of transparency with our partnership. But, you know, some of this also came from the feds, and it was things that we had already touched on with MDOTs. We were a little bit surprised.
That's the frustrating part, yeah.
This is part of the process, and really, if you understand sort of the context, you know, we're very much still in the queue for this. And this is everyone doing their due diligence, and there are a lot of agencies involved. There's the historical, the cultural, the biology. I mean, there's a lot of boxes to check.
Yeah, Mary, if I may, I mean, I agree with Holly. You know, during my day job, I see regulatory applications like this all the time, and this looks very standard. I, I see nothing here that appears to be a showstopper at this juncture. So I think the answers are very good to the questions, and many of the questions are the kind of thing I've seen before for other permits. So I think just keep driving on.
Yeah, very good. Other questions? Counsel? Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Very good, Rusty. Nice to meet you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rusty.
Okay, very good. We've come to the portion of the agenda where we're open for public comment on agenda items only. Please feel free to come up and introduce yourself, give us your city of residence, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Simon, 428 Butler Street. As many of you are aware, Judge Baker's decision came in on the Wicks Park property. And as you may know, that I am one of the people that is gonna be directly impacted by that build-out. I've attended all of the planning meetings. I was pleased to see that Judge Baker is respecting the noise concerns and also the time issue. I am not particularly happy about the intensity that will remain on the outdoor patio, which is 60 persons. I would like to know, in light of the fact that we have no zoning administrator as of next week, and I have no idea what your schedule is for that particular employee's replacement, does the city have a protocol, and who am I to call to resolve noise issues or any concerns I have? I mean, business hours is one thing, but usually those concerns are at nine o'clock or 10 o'clock, or if it goes beyond 10 o'clock, it will definitely be a big concern. So how are we gonna go about that?
Public comment only. If you want to put this in writing to us, please, and then Ryan can address it.
I'll put in my request right now to you as a counsel and a city manager that you give me a protocol, because there's several neighbors in this surrounding immediate area that would like to know that protocol. Okay? So that is my request. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you. Others that would like to come up, please?
Ann Fox, city of Sagatuck. I don't know about how many of the people in this room were surprised by the front page headline and article in the commercial record this morning regarding the status of the, of the trail grant. But I think a number would have been, given that, two things, the trail is important to this community, to a lot of people in this community, myself included. But they also might have been surprised because the last public pronouncement on the trail from the committee chair in this very room was that we were paraphrasing, waiting with bated breath and very, for very, and are very encouraged, we're about to get a positive response from the state. And whether it's formulaic or not, it's not a positive response from the state. So I wonder how many of those people wondered, how did it get in the newspaper? I can provide some answers, personal answers to that question. First off, the memo, which was the source for that article, was written by the state and delivered on the 8th of November, 12 days ago.
8th of July? July.
July, sorry. I don't wanna say, why did I fixate on November? 8th of July. And delivered on that date, which means the information was in the hands of responsible people in this room. On the 11th, that was, 8th is a Friday, 11th is a Monday, there was a council meeting where the various committees, they do report on the status of things. There was no comment, zero comment related to the trail by the people who are involved. On the 15th, that memo came to my attention. And upon reading it, I was surprised and realized that none of that information had been communicated to this council, none of it. And with opportunity being on the council meeting. So then here we are on the 20th, and all of a sudden, here it is in the newspaper, where Scott, Scott Sullivan got it? I have no idea, but it was floating around. All of this is really troubling to me from the standpoint of public information. That email was public information the moment it was written, certainly the moment it was delivered 12 days ago.
Thank you, Dan. Three minutes, sir. We stopped the clock. Next up, please. Sorry. Next person, public comment, please. Come on up, introduce yourself. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Gregory Bunsey from downtown Sagatuck. And I just wanted to let you know that if you had any questions about music in the park, I've been asked to represent Mill Pond Realty as I am a part-time employee. Laura asked me to step in and answer any questions when you get to that.
Okay. Thank you.
You mean movie?
Movie, yeah, you did. Yeah. Others, I Richard.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I wasn't sure if this was actually an agenda item or not, but since Mr. Fox addressed it, I guess I can. First of all, just quickly to address his concerns. I, I think it was very responsible of council to wait until they could find out more about that July 8th email. Uh, and indeed, that's exactly what happened. The engineers were able to speak on the following Monday with the representative from M dot and were able to get the information which you now have before you. Uh, and it was analyzed by the engineers and they promptly convened a call with members of the friends and the township, Douglas and member Leo to explain to us what M dot was saying. And of course, what M dot said in a phone call was, was of a much different tenor than just reading the email. Echoing what several of you have, have realized, this is very standard kind of stuff for a $2 million project. Did anybody really think it was just going to sail through a bureaucracy like M dot with no comments? I don't think so. And then lastly, uh, the, the, the concern about the railing is true. But just to be clear, uh, what Rusty said, I, we suspect that M dot may have not realized that the trail, the way we're proposing it would be split, so to speak, with pedestrians up on the sidewalk and the bicyclists down on the roadway. So their concern is if bicycles were on the sidewalk, they'd be that much higher and it would be that much more dangerous without higher railings. But if it's just pedestrians walking there, it's just like it is today. Uh, and as, as M dot has, uh, as C two has explained to M dot, that standard that tells you how high the railing should be shouldn't apply in this case. So as far as the friends are concerned, um, we think this is just part of the process. Uh, and we're all geared to, to move ahead and we're already talking about, uh, you know, what the next steps are with C two. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, Richard, come back up, introduce yourself so Jamie has it for the record.
Richard Donovan, City of Douglas.
Any others in the house? Anyone online, Madam Clerk? Very good. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next up, we have discussion items, the structure, structure, dockage license transfer, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is just for informational purposes today to tee up a discussion for Monday. This is 128 Van Belsen. And I included um some previous documentation with a very similar transfer uh with a Mr. Gordon Neil O'Forre. Again, that's just for information, informational purposes. We do have our attorneys reviewing the agreement that's going to go in front of you on Monday at this point in time.
Okay.
And I did send out an email today trying to clarify that.
Questions, comments, counsel? Uh, next up onto new business, we have several. I, I will say in, in advance of this, we really appreciate how folks are starting to get their special event permits in in a very timely manner. So it's wonderful and we thank you. So first up, special event movie in the park, Mr. Manager.
And Madam Mayor, this is on page five of your packet, goes through page 12. Uh, this is a pretty standard event. I don't know how many years in a row that they've had this event, seven years in a row. And so the, the sample motion for, for this event would actually be to approve or deny the special event application moving, moving the park sponsored by Mill Pond Realty to be held on August 12th, 2022 contingent on staff approval after safety meeting is conducted and planning.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
I would move to approve or deny, excuse me, to move the special event application with the caveat stating.
Okay. Second, please.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustor, second by Gardner. Questions, comments, concerns from counsel?
Question, um, have you selected a film yet?
Um, we're still waiting and I'll tell you who the top contenders are. We're letting the people vote. And um, uh, three top, well, I'll give you the four top contenders right now. It's Rees from 1978, Mama Mia from 2008, Dirty Dancing from 1987, and the Goonies.
What about a double feature?
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. This is not an expenditure. I think a voice, voice vote is okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, very good. There you have it, Mr. Muncie. All right, next up, we have special event camp logic ride for the kids fundraiser.
Madam Mayor, this item is on page 13, goes through page 19. Um, informations included in your packet. Uh, we do have a sample motion for this. Motion to approve or deny the special event application camp lodgets for the kids fundraiser to be held on October 8th, 2022 contingent on staff after staff approval after safety and planning meeting is conducted.
All right. I may, I will entertain a motion.
Anybody? Mayor, I'll make a motion. Okay, motion to approve the special event application for Camp Lodges for the kids fundraiser for a ride to be held on October 8th, 2022 contingent upon a city manager and staff's review with, yeah.
Okay, second. All right, we've got Leo first. Motion by Dean and second by Leo. Questions, comments, concerns? This is not the first time we've done this event, right?
Yeah, I was going to ask, have we done this?
I remember doing it before.
Prior.
Has it been done before?
Oh, yeah. I thought so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you, that was my question as well, is this, this is a stop.
Having participated in the Holland 100 this past weekend, which also passed through Saga Talk. It's a good event and I think the town appreciates having, you know, the exposure when the cyclist's coming through, so. Yeah, looks good to me.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, very good, thanks so much. Next up, we have the special event application for the Spear Street Block Party, Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, this is a fun one. This is on page 20, goes through 26. Uh, this one came before you last year as well. Uh, we do have a sample motion, which is to approve the special event application for Spear Street Block Party sponsored by the Spear Street Block Party Committee contingent on staff approval after safety and planning meeting is conducted.
I imagine I know who would like to make motion on this.
As a member of the block committee, I am going to abstain.
Oh, good, very good. I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a mo, a motion to approve the special event application. I'm looking at the wrong page for the Spear Street Black Party. Sponsored by Spear Street Black Party Committee. Thank you.
Motion by Leo and second by Trustor. Any questions or concerns?
Mayor, one question.
Yes.
Can council members expect an invite? I just happen to know that the Gardner family does grill a mean hot dog based on the past Halloween trick or treating.
We'll get around. Thank you. Let's get this passed first.
Any other questions?
Uh, I just, I want to say same thing I said last year. I really encourage this and I'm happy to see it because we do have so many Airbnbs and it's so nice to spend some time with your neighbors. And it just makes a lot of cohesion with our neighborhoods. So I, I love to see these come through, so.
All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, next up.
He abstained.
All right, next up, we have the Saga Tech High School Homecoming Parade.
Madam Mayor, this is on page 27 of your packet. This is an annual event as well. So the, the motion, sample motion would be to approve the special event application. Saga Tech High School Homecoming Parade to be held on October 7th, 2022 contingent on staff approval after safety and planning meeting is conducted.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, indeed.
May I? Motion to approve the special event application. Saga Tech High School Homecoming Parade to be held on October 7th, 2022 contingent on staff approval after the safety and planning meeting.
I would love to second that.
All right, motion by Stanton, seconded by Dean. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I'm really thrilled to see this. I think actually last year was the first one in a couple years.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Hmm, well, they brought back the floats. They brought back, there was some classes that never made a float before, so it was new to them.
Well, I think there's going to be a competition between whether the seniors or the sophomores do the better float.
Right, yep. I'll tell Charlotte that you've got some.
The gauntlet has been thrown down.
We'll be consulting, Mark.
Very good, excellent. Anything else?
Better watch out, you have to judge.
All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you so much. Next up, this was up before and we brought it back again, the Blue Star Navigate Bridge navigational light financial contribution, Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, thank you. My apologies, I used the, the, the cover page that I used at the previous meeting. The dollar amounts are 7,000 from the town, excuse me, 4,000 from the township, 7,000 from Douglas, 7,000 um from, from the City of Saga Tech. And so the motion would be uh to approve the city contributing uh for the installation of navigational lights on Blue Star Bridge at an amount not to exceed $7,000.
Okay. Yeah. Yes.
We discussed this at the Harbor Authority. The 7,000 is top line figure.
Yeah, up to. All right. Okay, great. Well, let's get us started. I'll entertain a motion and then we'll go from there.
I'll make a motion, city contributes for the installation navigation lights on Blue Star Bridge at a figure not to exceed $7,000.
Second.
Stan first, how's that? Uh, motion by Beckett, second by Stanton. Questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, customer, Trustor, just a question for you. The estimate that was given was $9,272 dated 9/3/21. Is that quote still good?
Yes, yes, it's my understanding that there's some question about the installation cost. So they want to re-leave it. And if it comes in at 9,000, it would be a lot less.
For total, yeah.
Then, then the other question is, uh, do we have, do you have an estimate on what the annual cost might be to maintain it? Kind of who's?
Solar powered lights, uh, communication, it's pretty grown, you know, as it is. I imagine these planes are, city, city can take that responsibility.
So that'd be exactly where I was going with this. So would that be the Harbor Authority directing that? Or would that be the Department of Public Works and Douglas and then the?
We probably have to hammer that up. The Harbor Authority really has no funding available. It doesn't come from any of its owners, members.
So have to just work out some type of agreement to maintain it. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, this is an expenditure, so we'll call for a voice or a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Stan.
Yes.
Trustor.
Very good. Uh, next up on our new business, we have the Wicks Park Bar and Grill, Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, I will hand this over to Jake Witty, he can run.
Hi Jake, just rolled in.
So I would preface this with an apology for my informal appearance. I was here today for deposition prep and did not realize I'd be appearing for all of you today. But nonetheless, thanks for having me. So this is the stipulated consent judgment um that we have negotiated uh with council for Wicks Park Bar and Grill. The kind of meat and potatoes of this consent judgment uh are going to be the revised conditions of special land use approval starting at section seven. Uh, and there are just a couple of things that I'd like to specifically direct your attention to. Uh, the first is subsection A, which is the restrictions um on indoor and outdoor occupancy. I know, I think we went back and forth on this a little bit with Council for Wicks Park Bar and Grill. Um, and ultimately, this is kind of what they insisted on. The appropriateness of these occupancy restrictions is totally a policy issue. It's not really a legal issue, so our office does not have a strong opinion one way or the other. Or as the appellate clearly does. So that's kind of one thing I would say, you know, that, that's something that I would encourage the, the council to maybe deliberate on. Uh, the second thing is subsection B. Hours of outdoor occupancies shall be limited to 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. In the first draft of the consent judgment we received from Wicks Park, um, there were also hours of indoor occupancy uh that I believe were 11 to 11. Uh, and for some inexplicable reason, uh, those were kind of rescinded as drafts of this consent judgment were changed with the contention that indoor hours of operation are governed by the liquor commission and shouldn't be part of the consent judgment. I, I understand that kind of the overriding concerns here is going to be noise and disruption. And so this is again, one of those policy considerations where if you think that some kind of restriction on indoor hours of operation is going to be necessary to safeguard adjacent properties from potential incompatibilities of this use, that's something that we can revisit. If you don't think it needs to be part of this consent judgment, then that's also fine. Again, just something to draw the council's attention to. And I would also add that, you know, whether or not this is something that's regulated by the liquor commission is irrelevant. We could include a stricter restriction in a mutually agreed to consent judgment if we wanted to.
Okay.
Uh, otherwise, I think it's fairly self explanatory. If we go to subsection G, there are three conditions there. Drainage being approved by the city engineer, fire department approval, uh, and then health department approval. All those need to occur for this site plan and special land use to be valid. Importantly, the consent judgment, you know, clarifies that even though these are revised conditions of approval, it's not excusing compliance with the city code. So it's really just essentially granting special land use approval with these new conditions versus the old ones. Um, and then that last section 10, uh, that just basically spells out the same kind of enforcement procedure that would apply to um any you know, use that's subject to a special land use or site plan. So if there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Let's get this going and get the motion on the table and then we'll open it up for discussion and questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion uh to approve the consent judgment as presented. Second.
Motion by Leo, second by Stanton. All right, council questions, comments, and concerns? We have Jake here.
So was this a, a compromise that was met between, you know, uh, Wicks Park? Did, did it go back and forth and this is what it came?
They tendered, I think, an initial draft. We sent revisions, they sent revisions, it went back and forth a few times. From just kind of a, you know, legal standpoint, we think that there are sufficient protections in here to, you know, insulate the, the city from liability. You know, really, I, I think the only questions here that are kind of beyond my purview are these policy issues. Is the use that we would be allowing through the stipulated consent judgment going to be, you know, disruptive or going to be acceptable?
Madam Mayor, I'm Russ Gardner, Planning Commission, City Council, Representative to the Planning Commission. Thanks again for your work on this. So to help me understand, a consent judgment is simply a proposed agreement between the city and the plaintiff?
Yeah, so this is essentially a settlement. The reason why it's called a consent judgment is because both of the parties will agree to it and then submit it to the court for entry. Once entered by the court, it has all the and then submit it to the court for entry. Once entered by the court, it has all the force and authority of a court. And it would resolve the pending appeal that's in the circuit court.
Which essentially is going to save the plaintiffs, the defendant money in terms of additional court costs and attorney fees and things of that.
Absolutely.
Correct, right? So this is the preferred method to settle issues like this.
Yes, this would put an end to the litigation.
Yep. So many of the council have heard the story already in regards to planning commission discussion around this. There's a lot of hours of discussion and debate and discussion with Chris Patterson from your firm regarding this request. And particularly around the occupancy as well as some of the other special land use revised conditions, most, all of which have been included, which I'm pleased with from a planning commissioner standpoint. The thing that still, two things that really concern me and from a planning commissioner standpoint is that this may set a precedent for other applicants to take the legal route as opposed to accepting the decision of the planning commission.
Well, I guess a couple of things there. I mean, first, that's, that's always going to be a risk. But I will say if you turn to section 11, we kind of anticipated that argument that says all the terms of this consent judgment are unique to this lawsuit and should not be viewed as setting any precedent.
Good.
So on and so forth. So, you know, and just, I mean, to be frank, just because those terms are in there does not mean that someone in the future will point at this and say, oh, will this happen so I can get it too? I mean, that's, that's inevitable, but there's, you know, obviously the, on its face, this document's not intended to set any kind of precedent. And to have the benefit of a stipulated consent judgment, you first have to engage in litigation with the city and then have to negotiate a mutually acceptable compromise. And so, you know, to the extent that someone's upset with some kind of zoning or planning decision, the option to appeal to circuit court is always there. And likewise, the city always has the ability to resolve litigation in this manner.
Thank you for that explanation. And also, it's worth pointing out that I believe that the special land use permit goes with the property, not with the owner. Is that correct?
Let me. I do think typically special land uses run with the land and I don't think any representation to the contrary has been made in this stipulated consent judgment. If that's something, I knew that was going to happen. Yeah. If that's something that the council is concerned about is this, you know, the rights afforded here under the stipulated consent judgment eventually being conveyed to a subsequent owner of this property. I mean, I don't really see how that would impact kind of whether or not this use is suitable. But if there, you know, if there's something that I'm not seeing, we can always put that into consent judgment to provide for the non-transferability, but that is something that the applicant might take issue with.
I believe that the zoning administrator, who I don't think is on today's call, has mentioned several times that this would be going with the property, not with the owner. And so I just want to ensure that there's not a opportunity here for this to be revisited with the change in ownership potentially down the road.
Revisited, I'm not sure I follow.
No, meaning that this is the decision and that this will stay with the property even.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Then, thank you very much. So back to item A. And I know that you mentioned this is a subjective discussion and I just want to again emphasize that there was a lot of discussion with the plaintiff and with the planning commission regarding this occupancy. And, you know, this represents, our numbers had represented a best attempt to meet them in the middle. You know, we had originally agreed on 25, which was coming from the applicant's statements on record. We then came back with a 2525 agreement, which was rejected and now results in this consent judgment proposal of 90. So it's, you know, 40%, it's almost, almost double what the planning commission had offered to the applicant back in, I think, March or April, whenever it was. So, you know, and to the speaker that spoke earlier, without these other conditions, it would be difficult for me to support this just because it is clearly an issue for everybody that's around there in terms of noise and being able to, you know, have a peaceful evening. So that, that, I just want to put that on the table, that had been a lot of discussion around that.
Sure, sure. And when you say without these other conditions, which specific conditions are you referencing?
No, I mean in terms of the outside, no amplified music.
Okay.
Things of that nature.
Right, right, right. Okay, I understand what you're saying now. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Jake, you, could you revisit the hours again you mentioned?
Yeah, so.
Hours. That was part of the original, I believe.
Yeah, as originally proposed to us.
Discussions and then they rejected it outright.
Yeah, so the, I think the original proposed consent judgment that was transmitted by the applicant contained those indoor hours of operation. And then it was subsequently removed.
By?
The applicant.
Original stipulation in the first steps of the negotiation, so to speak, including.
Yes, and that's, and that's just my.
How much was, what was that?
11 to 11. I believe. And you'll also have to, don't, don't take my word as gospel on this. I was involved in the negotiation of this with Chris and I think he was a little more active in the early stages of it. So my recollection is that the first draft of the agreement we saw came with that restriction.
Okay, and so, so we have a good understanding, without a limitation on indoor hours, it actually operated until 2:00 AM. Which is.
Okay.
The maximum under the mission, the latest state. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, unless there's a provision in the city code to the contrary, then yes, they would be allowed to operate until 2:00 AM. The, I guess the counter to that is if you look at subsection D, music live or recorded is limited to indoor only at a level that does not interfere with intimate conversation. So to the extent that there's music being played indoors while events are carrying on until 2:00 AM, that has to be at a fairly low level of volume. If your concern is people going to Wicks Park Bar and Grill to drink until 2:00 AM and then making a racket to leave the bar, I guess the consent judgment doesn't really anticipate that, but there is this restriction on music.
Guess, just looking at potential scenario, I guess that's what you kind of do. Now, his music stops at 10:00 AM. The indoor park doesn't stop at 10:00 AM, continues to 2:00 AM with wide open windows and doors and in a quiet night and then, you know.
Well, again, it can. And maybe our planning commission representative can shed some light on this. I mean, are indoor hours of operations for bars and restaurants, is that something that we would frequently see? The conditions from the planning commission.
I do know it applies to new liquor licenses and has been put in.
I can speak on, I can speak on behalf of another business in the area that has a liquor license. When I went through planning commission, I had to stop indoor at 11:00. That was what I was to do.
Same with the 7:00.
Yep.
And again, because this is an existing business, I mean, they have one portion, they're still at 2:00 AM.
Right.
Is it, is it, you know, so.
And you bring up a very interesting point, Councilman Beck. And if I recall correctly, and I could be wrong, is that when the discussion regarding the hours of operation was both inside and outside, period. Not just limited to the outside occupancy, which is now, this is a bit different, at least in my memory.
Well, my understanding was that we directed council to go back to the litigant to negotiate and compromise on our behalf. And this is the agreement that was made per our recommendations and encouragement to them. And this is what they've come back with. So that, that is where it sits at this point, short of going to court. So.
I would add, so this, this is kind of where the two parties reached a consensus and now it's before the council. You can approve it, you can deny it. You can also make a motion to approve it with a modification and see if the applicant accepts that. So that, that is, I would kind of present that as a third option. You know, just because, you know, if the council lands on, in its current form, this isn't acceptable, but there are ways that we could see it changed that, you know, we would be agreeable.
I think, if I may, I think, I think 7D gets to the heart of the matter about outdoor noise. So I'm, I would just propose we call it a question.
All right. The question's been called. Motion made by Leo, seconded by Stanton. We can have a roll call on this. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes. Beckett.
I'm going to vote no. I would rather see a closure of the indoor activity at 11:00 PM. So.
Okay.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
I will vote no as well in the same issue that has been brought up by Councilman Beck and regarding the occupancy change.
Okay.
Leo.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster.
I'll vote no, under the same concerns that.
Right. Motion passes for three. All right. Thanks Jake, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for having me.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, thank you. I love you.
All right. At this time, we're to public comments. Please, if you'd like, come up to the podium, please introduce yourself in your place of residence. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you so much.
Time in 428 Butler. For those of you that voted this in, and I'm assuming that you're allowing the time to be till 2:00 AM. Am I hearing that correct? Can I ask that question, Madam Mayor?
In the consent agenda, it's in the consent agreement, so that's what's there, according to the.
All right. Already at 2:00 AM, people that are leaving Wally's are playing in the park next to me. Whether there's music or not, they're overindulged and there is loudness and it is crude loudness. I don't think I have to entertain you with what type of crudeness goes on at 2:00 AM. All right. That will disrupt all of my guests and the neighbors. And so you will be hearing from me on that. All right. And again, I am requesting a protocol on who I am to call at midnight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi Kate.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
Yeah. So Kate White's last day is Friday.
Yes.
Right. And as a reminder, Kate White came to us as an intern. And I found her to be highly intelligent and very helpful to the city organization. So useful, in fact, that we created a position for her to keep her on as long as we can, could. But she's off to different things now, and so she wants to say a few words.
Please.
Yes. Kate White, city staff, I don't live in town. I just wanted to take this time and space to say thank you to everybody, council and staff. It really has been a great experience to serve this community. I've learned a lot of things here. There's always something to do. And I just respectfully want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity and taking a chance on me and everything I've learned here and done here, I'm going to carry with me into my new role. And I just, again, thank you.
Tell us where you're going.
Holland Charter Township as Assistant Planner and Zoning Administrator. So should be a big learning curve.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to.
Very good. Thank you. We'll miss you Kate. We will miss you.
You guys are more than welcome to stay in contact. I always love to be of assistance. And I look forward to see what, what the city has going on. So, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks Kate. Really appreciate it.
Garn.
I hear my name. Wait, hold on for a second. Hold on, we still have people in the chambers. Give me a hot second. All right. Anybody else? Public, it was online, Dan. Come on up.
I just want, I'm Dan Fox against the. Wasn't paying attention to the clock. I'll pay better attention now. I don't have that much, I don't have, I know it's both places, but I got notes here to read at the same time.
Losing seconds.
I'm a simple person with, you know, a simple information requirement. Now you're using up my time. That doesn't. Going from the, my chronological, what happened when, up to the commercial record article this morning. Maybe, maybe I'm crazy. But to me, public and, and options some are more willing to consider than others. But to me, public information is just that, public information. I don't get to choose what's public. You don't get to choose what's public. You don't get to choose. Once it's public, it's public. Like it, agree with it, challenge it, want to work it, work the subject matter? Terrific. But don't prevent me from looking at it and everybody else in the city from looking at it. I think that raises a serious ethical question that this council ought to address. And if I was sitting there, I would be saying, you know what? We need to take a look at this because this time it's the trail, next time it's something that's precious to one of you or somebody else. Then the information doesn't get out. I would, I would convene or get the assistance of an outside objective, which I am not, or any of you probably. Look at what transpired here. Who made the decisions, why those decisions were made? Were they made correctly? Or can we learn from this because they were made incorrectly? And to me, at the bottom of all that is, public information is public information. Let it out. I know you, I know there was worry, you said in your note to me, the mayor's note to me, said there was concern that if it was released, it would cause drama. So who put you, me, or anybody else in charge of drama in Sagatuck? God knows Sagatuck is drama. You find it under every rock. I mean, it's just how things run here. So let it, let it go. Let, let, if it's public information, particularly from the state on an item that's this important. Don't wait until the guy can get up and rattle off a bunch of yabuts. Let's deal with the yabuts right at the time. No hidden data, no hidden facts. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else in the chambers before Jane Underwood joins us? Yes, hi.
Hello.
Mate, please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is AJ Nasser. I own the residence at 143 Park Street in Sagatuck, which is directly across the bay, for those of you that don't know where it is. I'm also the investor in the real estate that Wicks Park sits on and the investment money that's been going into that property. When the board approved and the council approved the big addition right across the street from my property at 143 Park and knowing engineering and knowing that sound travels across water at five times the speed as it does land, you basically put 300 people 50, 60 feet off my residence. I can hear a conversation like it's next door. You know what? I'm okay with it. I looked at many cities. My wife is from Michigan, we're residents of Florida. We looked at many cities to invest in and come and move to, and we fell in love with what you people have done here. I think you've done a great job with a balance, and I know it's a thankless job and I feel for you. It is a thankless job. I think, I think what Wicks is going to do is, is going to be make the town proud. It's not going to be the hoopla that everybody's think we're, we're really focused on doing smaller events and doing wedding rehearsal parties and things of that nature and trying to make a little speakeasy that you can come to in the wintertime and sit around a warm fireplace and sit in a big soft chair. But, you know, the piano bar at nighttime, I can hear everything that's going on. It's why I'm here. People don't go to towns and say, hey, I think I'll find a room to stay in and then see if there's something to do. They come to this town because you people have done a great job of balancing great restaurants, great activities with, with places to stay. The places to stay are the afterthought. I hate to, you know, tell Catherine or anybody else in this town that, that fact, but that is the fact. that, that fact, but that is the fact. I own real estate in 19 different states and almost 5 million square feet at one time or another. And I've dealt with many boards in my life. I think you guys have done an excellent job of balancing it. You know, I've stayed out of it because I think it should run its course. But I hope to make you guys proud of what we do over there and, and support Christine and Wicks in a way that you'd say, you know what? It wasn't a bad idea. It came out pretty nice. And I wanted to thank you guys for at least putting up with everything that has to go through. But it's part of the job, unfortunately, thankless job, but you get paid so much for it. And we do appreciate as residents, you know, I, I can tell you, living over there, my wife and I are so happy that we picked Sagatuck. We bought land over in Fenville now where we're going to do some things. And we, we do love it up here, and I thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. All right, to our online audience, I believe the first voice I heard pop up was Jane Underwood.
Yes, Jane Underwood, 130 Perryman. I'm sure you all heard about the incident at Oval Beach yesterday afternoon. It happened to be my childhood friend. And luckily, they were able to get her out. There happened to be two nurses on the beach that started CPR. But, and this is what really concerns me, a young man had to run up to the beach house and then I guess go to the only phone because cell phones don't work on the beach. When our fire chief came, I needed some help. I said, chief, can you call Gary Medler? He's also a good friend of Lucy's. His phone didn't work. I understand we are negotiating with several cell companies. But I think the city should have the authority to insist that these cell companies, for example, I have Verizon, and I don't know anyone who doesn't have Verizon around here, AT&amp;T? I don't know. Can you please look into the fact if these cell towers can be multi-used? It could have been, she's in Howland Hospital now, she's in a coma. But it was a horrifying experience. If those two nurses hadn't been there, it would be a funeral. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Thank you. Anybody else online that would like to make public comment? Madam Clerk, see? All right, very good. I'm not aware of any correspondence that we have, so we'll move to council comments. We'll start with Lauren on that side this time.
The only thing I just wanted to say tonight is the information that was received on the bike trail. Just as a journalist for 20 years, context is everything. And just because it's put in a newspaper in a certain way does not mean that it should have been put out to the newspaper. Context is everything. That's why you have to get information on what this means before you make rash decisions or put information out that hasn't, you know, been vetted in a way that there's context. So that's all I have to say about that. I absolutely agree with Jane Underwood and the need for cell service at the beach and throughout our community.
Mr. Gardner?
I've got additional comments today, thanks.
Like Lauren, I was a working journalist for more than a decade, and now I work in state government. I'm a huge believer in transparency of public information. That's why we all cherish and respect both as, as civil servants and also as journalists who utilize it, the Freedom of Information Act, which clearly states people's rights to information. And there's a very clear and robust process to make sure people do have access to public information. In closing, I wish she was still here, but I would love to, once again, congratulate Kate on her new appointment, and she'll be sorely missed. And I hope she doesn't hesitate to come and visit us and reach out to us if she, you know, ever wants to look for other opportunities in our great city.
I would just echo Jane's concerns. And I, I just wonder if we could, if there's some provision for emergency through the county, through Scott Corbin, if there's some, you know, this is, this has always been our fear. We honestly, on the, on the non-motorized trail, we spent so much time talking about the, you know, the fire department getting across the bridge. But I always would think in the back of my mind, really, if, if someone's drowning at Oval Beach, that actually is a, is a bigger concern. And so I just wonder if there isn't some sort of mechanism where you can have emergency cell service in a very public municipal place? And if there isn't some provision in the law that we just don't have to wait for a commercial carrier to come? And this is, this is probably the most dire public safety issue really in our community, in my opinion. So thank you, Jane, and I'm so sorry that that was your friend. And I, I just really wish her well.
Thank you to all of you. I'm still not, not my usual self.
Yes. And as, as far as the trail goes, you know, this, this has just been an ongoing process. We've had feedback from M.DOT multiple times. You know, this, this is really, like I said, it was, it was unusual. But, you know, like Mark Twain said, you know, word of my demise is, what is it, greatly exaggerated? So, you know, it's just, just, this, this is a process. And as Richard said, it can be painful, nobody's going to give you $2 million, you're going to work for it. And, and that's what we're doing. So we're, we're still, we're still swinging, still pedaling.
Mark?
Yeah, I guess a follow-up regarding the issues at Oval Beach. It's not the first time that the citizens have faced with that, that issue, going back many, many, many years. We do have landlines available at the, the gate. I don't think the landline extends to the concession stand. That might be something to consider. Because until we put the new concession standing, we, you know, that, the beach house was the center of the activities up there. Also, we, at periods of time, we tried walkie-talkies. It has some, so that might be something going on. Until we do get reliable cell service, but it's a big, it's a big wish. It's a big wish. It's not just society, it's an issue between up and down the state park. State park has a much bigger problem when it comes to emergencies. I just want to say that, you know, those are issues, there's things that we have tried in the past. And maybe some of it's, you know, worth, at least taking advantage more of what we got.
I have that concern as well, you know, our ultimate responsibility to protect the life of our. And I'm wondering whether it's like a radio solution that you could get into the fire police network by a radio. I think we should investigate all possible ways, including maybe asking AT&amp;T and Verizon to come to us and explain what their plan is for, you know, our community. So I have a very serious concern. I was also, I was very pleased to get the response from Rusty today. Leaving you to a lot of my concerns, particularly about the damn railing on the grid, which would be a horrible disaster, like if we had to put up a five-foot wall. Just want to make that, I thought they did a good job in responding to that.
And I would just say, this is a process. I mean, this is the first time that I'm, that this has been completed from the engineers. So there's been a lot of back and forth. This has not been, you know, this, this has been a conversation to try to get the context.
Yeah.
Can I add one more? I would assume some of these questions that are going to be relative to council decisions and involvement will come back to us once you have discussions. You know, I see several things, I don't know, it's going to take some type of council action.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Before we get really deep into the process.
Yeah, and some of them are unfounded too, so.
I just thought it was important to say that what's expressed in this engineering report and his replies are not necessarily better or approved by the council.
Right, no, this is, yeah, it's a conversation. They're holding a big check and we're going back and forth.
Yeah. So if, if I may, and just in closing, so I too will emphasize, I really don't want to have us have another incident like we did yesterday. And I, I really do think it behooves us to get this moving fast. I, I recognize that we have a lot on our plate. But losing life like that when we could easily have the communications in place to get the necessary help, I think we, we need to move that up. I think it's very, very clear. I, I can't imagine how awful all of us would feel had the outcome been worse, as bad as it is. Secondly, just in general, whether it's regarding the ongoing discussion with the trail or anything else, what I appreciate about this council and those of us who are elected to public office is that we understand that we have to trust the process. And oftentimes, and I, I say this to our constituents many times, Garn, why isn't this resolved yet? Whether it's with our floating homes, why isn't this resolved? And folks, they want the, the solution so fast, and I always tell them, trust the process. Trust the process. Yes, it's frustrating, it doesn't happen as fast as we want it, but trust the process. And we are elected to make sure that that process is completed in a way that our constituents can trust. So while it is so easy to kind of jump the gun and get overly dramatic and print things ahead of time, in the end, when that happens, it basically makes that entity look bad and foolish. And this is certainly in the case of the commercial record, which felt that they needed to publish something without the complete story. And I've called the editor on that, and I've made that very clear. But in the big global picture, again, what I appreciate about this council and our professional staff is that we recognize that we trust the process. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor?
Yes.